We're informal, we're informal around here. We'll, we're gonna go ahead and start tonight's meeting. A regular meeting for the Ojai Planning Commission for July 15, 2015. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, file it with the secretary prior to the start of this meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not to the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Roll call, please, Chair.
Commissioner Merk?
Here.
Jagiella?
Here.
Zabilla?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Chair Foster?
Here.
Nicklin?
Here.
All right, Commissioner Nicklin, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time we set aside for Public Communications, which is the, which during this meeting offers members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time stated earlier may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no actions can be taken at this meeting. I have before me no speaker's cards, but if anyone's out there would like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come forward. I see nobody coming forward, so we'll move on to our consent item. First of all is the minutes of our regular meeting of the Planning Commissioner from, Commission from July 1st.
I'll move and approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I'll second. Merk?
Yes.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Our next item is the disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. I don't know how applicable that is to tonight, but we can go around.
Well, I'm familiar with the playground in Libby Park. My kids used to play there, but other than that.
Fair enough. I think we all are.
Yeah.
No site visits and no ex parte contact.
I've visited both sites and no ex parte contacts.
I've been to both sites and no ex parte contacts.
I've visited the Libby Park before.
I've been to both sites and no ex parte contacts.
I am helping with fundraising for the Libby Park playground. I don't know if I have to recuse myself or not, but...
I'm thinking there's no determination being made. It's a discussion, so it should be fine for to participate. In fact, we're looking forward to your input. That leads us to our public hearing item, which is a time extension for a conditional use permit, CUP 14-05, and a design review permit, DRP 14-12, for a two-story, single-family residence replacement that was destroyed by fire in an artist's studio guesthouse with a full bathroom, not accessible from the main unit at 303 Bald Street. Assessors parcel number 0230-141280. Could we hear from staff on that?
So I just want to point your attention to the memorandum in front of you tonight. This comes from the city manager's office, and I think if you read it, it was sort of self-explanatory that he's asking for this item to be continued to August 19th for, for it to be, I guess, to give the city additional time to look at their, their cultural resources policies. He wanted me to reiterate that this has been run by the city attorney and that he concurs with the request for the extension, or, yeah, time extension or continuation, I guess I should say, to the August 19th meeting.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Well, would these archaeological things change this project at all? Would we have to go back and say, "Oh, by the way, you need to do all this"?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. The idea is that the city's implementing extensive, new policies which are extensive and go beyond what has always traditionally been here in Ojai. So while this project was reviewed in the procedures that were in place at the time and continue to be in place today, they will not be consistent, the review will not be consistent with those that are adopted in the future.
Okay, I think we're gonna have more discussion on that later or through this process. Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? Okay, so this is a, I suppose it's really not, it's more of a discussion item, or we're actually asking that this be a...
Well, I think the applicant is here, is that correct?
Yes.
So I think he'd like to speak.
Oh, well, we certainly want to hear from you, so please introduce yourself.
I'm Christopher Danch. I'm the attorney for the applicant and also attorney, in fact, for the applicant. Just got word this a very short time ago, like, an hour ago, that this issue had come up. My, on behalf of the applicant, I'm, yes, I mean, I'm sort of on the position of objecting to a delay based on this matter, only because it's stuff to be done in the future, and it sort of puts this project in limbo. It's been reviewed under existing procedures. We've been moving forward diligently. We're ready to pull the building permit and begin construction upon payment of the permit fees. And staff has recommended the extension of the CUP and the DRP, and it seems to be unfair to the applicant to, to put something in limbo as to things that are not even in place yet, as to what will happen. We are under deadlines with this project, particularly with the insurance, because this is a rebuild following a fire. This site has been occupied, at least by this house, for 60-plus years, up to this date. So I, I question what, how it is that you can say, "We're gonna change our stuff in the future, therefore you have to stand by and be subject to something we have no idea is gonna happen to you." That is not fair to the applicant. It's gone through the procedures as they currently stand. This is not a controversial site. This has been occupied and deeply disturbed for many, many years, and, you know, completely settled. And so I think it is, you can, you can see it from our point of view, is that you're saying, "We're gonna change our rules. We don't know what that is. We don't know the effect, and so we're gonna delay you while we figure it out and maybe put your project in a whole different stance," which is unlikely, but it does leave us in a significant limbo. And I think it represents an unfairness to the applicant.
Now, my understanding is that you applied for the time extensions.
Yes.
So you're not objecting so much to that as the...
Well, I'm requesting a time extension.
Okay.
But on the DUP, DRP and the CUP, what I am objecting to is the continuation of the hearing on that time extension, which I believe is what's being asked for by the...
Actual continuation of the hearing.
Of the hearing and not a ruling on, on the, on the extension itself.
And that has to do with this memo that we have before us?
Yes, sir.
It continues to August 19th, which is more than a month from now. Okay. I think that's worthy of discussion, you know. Anything else to add to that?
Just to, just to be perfectly clear, what we are asking for, obviously, at this hearing, is approval of our request for a time extension on the CUP and the design review permit.
Mm-hmm.
That is the last thing we have to do prior to payment of the balance of the fees, to pull a building permit and begin construction. Our timeframe, we're under pressure from an insurance settlement on this to commence construction, and I'd rather not throw myself at the mercy of the reasonableness and fairness of the insurance company if I don't have to. And also, just, just the fact that it's something that is yet to be determined in the future, when this was already reviewed under existing policies currently in place, seems to be an unfairness to the...
So you see it as an undue hardship?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Danch. Thank you.
Okay. If you have any more questions, please, please ask.
Right, we'll, we'll have more discussion on this. Commissioner Lajowski?
Sorry, I have a, I do have a question for the applicant.
Please, come forward.
So what happened with the, you had an original, how come you're asking for an extension at this point? What happened in the previous year?
Well, the design review, the CUP was granted in December, and then we have been diligently pursuing the final, you know, the permit process, and there's just no way that we could practically commence construction and exercise the CUP within that six-month period. It's very difficult to do that, and we were unable to do that. The DRP was actually added, extension was added by staff, and so as long as we're here, let's do that as well. But that doesn't go until December, but we would be undoubtedly in a position to ask for that if we were, but we are not in a position, even though we have diligently pursued, pursued the permit, and I think staff can say that, can, can back me on that, we were unable to commence construction, which is the exercise of the CUP.
So have, so have plans been submitted?
Yes.
We're ready to pull the permit.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. We're one step away from that.
I should, I should say that while they put the extension in on June 1st, I think was when you did, they, they, that this is the first opportunity, we had to actually get this before the commission, as you recall, we had one meeting that was canceled in there. And during that whole time, they've worked towards fulfilling all their plan check items, and so now I think they've been ready to issue for maybe two or three weeks. So they've been actually waiting on this hearing from us.
Just for a point of clarification, so have they been ready, were they ready prior to July 1st?
Oh, yes. They were just, they, I believe, let me look in here, I think that letter's in here. I think they asked for the extension, June 1st is when it came in, and they expired on June 3rd, and I think Sherry could probably know, she does a lot of the routing, and I think they were...
Well, one thing I was gonna explain is, will you explain, Mr. Danch, how you were waiting on your trust money to be able to pull that permit?
Yes, we, well, in discussions with the city, we were ready to pull the permit pending this hearing several weeks ago. At least two or three weeks ago, we were ready. So in mid-June, we were ready. What has happened in terms of that is that the funding for this is coming from a family trust. Unfortunately, in June, the trustee and settler died, and now the paperwork is being processed in Nevada to transition to the successor trustee, so the, they can disburse the money. And so we've been waiting on that. That will be resolved any day. I just talked to the successor trustee this week, and they're expecting the paperwork to be completed this week. And the funds are sitting in the accounts, they just are frozen pending the transfer of all the, all the, all the trust documentation to the successor trustee. So we are ready to go. We've been ready since mid-June and have been waiting on, on this.
See, so they were supposed to pull their building permit by June 3rd, so their CUP wouldn't expire, but their DRP is good till December, because CUP's only good for six months, DRPs are good for a year. So he knew he wasn't gonna be able to pull it by June 3rd. It was gonna be more like June 18th. It was like gonna be two weeks late, so he didn't want to risk that two week, you know, we can't just say, "Oh, it's close." We can't do that. It's June 3rd expiration. So he submitted prior to the expiration, June 1st, for the extension. It just took us this long to get it to a hearing. So he's all within all of his...
Timeframes.
Timeframes.
And you're ready to pull permits tomorrow?
Yes. The only thing I'm waiting for is the, the check from the trust, which is supposed to be here any day. The attorneys in Nevada have said the paperwork's complete, and so we're waiting for the funds to be transferred to my account.
Okay. All right.
The time extension is just for the conditional use permit, not the DRP?
It, it, we added in the DRP just because it's convenient to make them all, both of them expire on the same date.
And avoid another hearing, if necessary. Yes.
Okay, and what is it, Kathleen, in, in the new AB 52 that would affect this change? Do you just not know?
Well, AB 52 doesn't affect ministerial permits or non, or, I should say exempt permits, so this project's exempt. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be affected by AB 52. What affects this is that the city is working on an urgency ordinance to change its cultural resources policies, and that will go beyond, as council has said a number of times, they want to go beyond AB 52. So that's what, and will affect this, this project as they go forward with that.
Wouldn't that be true with every project?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
I mean, any project that came before us would be affected by some future decision or ordinance, or...
Could, there could be, there could be potential. I think this one is just very close. So the idea is that rather, and then have it go under the old policies, the idea is to continue it since the city is already in process and allow the new, and, you know, stay those projects which were done under the old policy and allow them to come under the new policy. I think that's what this is saying.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I mean, obviously, you know, there, you have to, somehow, we've had this problem before as Planning Commission, you know, we talk about height lane, height limit changes, or solar access, or any of these ordinances we've been doing over the last couple of years. There's always a timeline where someone falls on this side and someone falls on that side. In this particular case, the city manager and the city attorney are asking that you not allow this one to fall under the old regulations, but you allow it to fall under the new ones. By continuing it, that's what would happen.
You're talking about the new urgency, this urgency ordinance?
Or however, that's my understanding. Mm-hmm.
It's called an urgency?
Urgency ordinance.
It seems a stretch to, all due respect, it seems a stretch to delay a project to make it subject to something coming in the future. That doesn't, that doesn't seem right.
I do have a question.
I have to kind of agree.
Yeah, I do too.
That's why I'm kind of...
Ridiculous.
You know, I'm...
Yeah.
Are we under, are we under orders from the city attorney to, to, you know...
Can we, can we just, yeah, what he said.
I don't, no, I don't think that there is any, the council did not take action on this item as a collective whole. You're not, you do not have direction from the city council. The city attorney and the city manager are telling you that you don't put this project in any kind of legal risk by continuing it. That's what they're trying to tell you. That's their advice. But no, you're, there's no directive there, because that's just, that's just not, that would have to come from the city council.
Well, there is no legal risk if there is no set ordinance. I mean, it's all drafting stage at this point.
And it sounds like an existing property that burned down that's been in place for many years.
That's correct.
And wouldn't another consideration be, because I know you are, you know, you have a map of potential sites within the city limits that could have artifacts or remains and what have you. Was this project tagged or in, for any reason, in being in proximity, or was there a red flag about the location?
No. There's no heightened...
Alert.
No. But, but we all know, if you've been paying attention to the issues that have been going forward or going on in the past couple of months, is that many people disagree with that map, and they want, they want it to be a completely different review. And so while current department policies were adhered to, those direction from the city manager were adhered to, very, very, there are a large, well, there's a number of people that disagree with that and don't want that to be the policy, and that's, that there is the controversy. There's, there was nothing, I found, we reviewed the project, you know, today, and there's nothing wrong with the policies. They were completely compliant with what the city of Ojai has done in the past. However, they will not be compliant with what, where the city is going in the future. If that were to be, I can't, like, it's like he's saying, "I don't know, because it's not adopted, so I don't really know." But where the potential is going in the future, they're not compliant with.
Do we, is there, and I think we've kind of mentioned this, is there a policy where a project's been, basically, this project has been approved, they're just asking for a continuance?
No, he's asking for a time extension.
Time extension.
For not to expire, correct?
Right. So, but he's gone through the procedure, everything's been done properly and vetted, and, you know, you just brought this up too. If there's, are there other projects that are gonna come in, and are we all just gonna wait?
Well, let me just explain something. So, so when a project comes in, okay, yes, I understand. So when a project comes in for an extension, you know, some of the criteria that's looked at whether or not to extend a project is whether or not denying the extension, sticking extension, letting the project die and allowing the applicant to reapply would mean that he would come under different juris, different rules and regulations. But in this case, those rules and regulations aren't in place. So it's a little bit difficult for me to answer these questions, because, I mean, certainly, if there were new rules and regulations and they had a, and they had an impact on this project, staff would be advising you, saying, you know, "I understand that the applicant's gonna be disappointed, but, you know, denying his, his time extension and allowing him to reapply and come under the old, or the new requirements might be prudent for the city." But I don't know what those are, so I don't know how to evaluate something I don't know. So I'm just saying that this is the letter, they're asking for it to be continued to the 19th, and then I'm sure on the 19th they will have a better idea, and in fact, there may be new rules and regulations in place at that time. So that's kind of the situation, and I'm sorry that I don't have more information for you.
So generally, or, I think it would be safe to say, we could all come back on the 19th and have this project come before us, and it may not be resolved?
It, no, that's right. That's correct. He may...
So he's basically in limbo.
It may not be resolved because there may be other things that he needs to do as far as environmental review. Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Seems difficult to be subject to environmental regulation, doesn't exist.
It just seems totally ridiculous to me. I, and I may not have all the, all the information that Rob Clark has in order to do this, but it seems like every project that would come before us would have to abide by the same restriction. If we're gonna hold him to this limbo stage where, you know, he has to wait until this thing is figured out over here, that just seems completely unfair and ridiculous, and it seems like every other project should be subject to the same thing, right?
Chair, Chair, could I, like, point a order or something? Are we still in a, are we still in a public hearing, or are we, are we in...
This is a discussion?
Or we have...
We're gonna, we're gonna listen to public.
Oh, I, no, I'm not, I don't, I'm just wondering if we have any other discussion before we move.
We're right now, right, I feel like we're, if we have any questions for the applicant, now's the time, and staff, before we bring up a public comment or a public hearing portion. Are we good for now?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danch.
Okay. I'll be right here if you need me for anything else.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a public hearing, and anybody is welcome to come forward and have the three minutes at the podium.
Good evening, daunting, Ojai, California, Signal Street. Concerns regarding this project and the potential sensitivity for cultural resources were raised with the city in February of this year. They have been repeatedly raised, as well with other developments that the city is currently under review. As you all are familiar with, we've been concerned about the cultural resources review processes of the city for some time. There is a general plan, the Ojai general plan, that requires the long-term preservation and scientific investigation of both known and possible cultural resources. The plan actually lays out a program for doing phase-one investigations in areas that might be considered sensitive or where cultural resources might possibly exist. Given this information, significant new information has come to light as to whether or not this project has complied with the general plan, which is required under the Ojai municipal code, that all development must be consistent with the general plan. Again, the general plan states that we, as a city, have elected to preserve our cultural resources, both prehistoric and historic resources. There are numerous historic resources around town that include sites around the old railroad area and that type of thing. So it's both historic and prehistoric resources that we're concerned about. The original house was built in 1953, and at that time, there wasn't much subsurface disturbance. They didn't go very far into the earth, because there weren't earthquake requirements back then. So we are concerned with the, the new residence and gas house being built that might go into soils that were previously undisturbed, and there should be proper investigation as to whether or not cultural resources might be impacted. With regards to the map, I know everyone's heard some discussion about the map. My understanding is that the map was provided by the tribe, so it would only, to my knowledge, include prehistoric, it would not include historic resources. That map was provided in the late 1990s, I believe, so any sites that have been found subsequent to that also would not be identified on the map. I know some sites were identified in the early 2000, which are in the vicinity of the, of the development. So we have concerns about potential cultural resources that may be in the area. And do you feel like, feel that to comply with the general plan, that it should be reviewed by an archaeologist to do a phase-one investigation and do a literature search to get an updated report of what's in the area and a pedestrian survey, if one has not been done before? There's no indication in the report that there's been any investigation at any time for cultural resources, and from what I saw from the conditions of approval, there's no conditions of approval even that make allowances for accidental discovery of cultural resources. So we're asking you to give us a little bit more time to look at this. And yes, in light of AB 52, the tribe has been involved, they're concerned about the resources, and we just need a little bit more time to look at this. It's just, again, we've brought, we brought it to the city in February and have repeatedly asked for consultation on the issue, and, and only because it's here before you tonight are we faced with, with needing to talk about what's there, what's potentially there, and ask for your assistance in just giving us a little bit more time to, to take the proper steps to ensure we're compliant with the general plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
I'd like to make a further comment, if possible. Well, yeah, but we do understand the, the need for this, for protection of cultural resources, but I also look at the issue of fairness and timing. This has been on the, on the docket here and there with these people for almost seven months, you know, and we would have happily complied with stuff, you know, as we have everything that's come before us from the city, we have complied with. We haven't given any objection, and we just did it. And now we are here, ready to begin construction, and this project's been, it hasn't been in hiding, it's been sitting right here, and now we need a little more time, at great cost and inconvenience and hardship to the applicant. So there's a real question of, of the due process of having this happen this way.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak at this time? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion, and we'll have discussion amongst ourselves. Rosalie, I know you have some ideas that you'd like to discuss.
Well, I mean, this is obviously patently unfair on the face of it. I don't know how we're going to be able to conduct business in this city if we don't bring some predictability to the process. You know, I, I'm very anxious to hear about the urgency ordinance. And I think, yes, of course, everyone understands that cultural resource is very important. We need to protect these treasures, absolutely, but we also have to balance everyone's interests. And I don't think that we can do this by blindsiding people at the last minute and not allowing them to go forward. I don't think anybody's gonna want to do anything in this town if this is how we're gonna operate. So I think we need to take a step back. I want to hear at some point about what's happening with this urgency ordinance, what, what's the process, how did this all come about, and let's bring some sanity to this. this. But as far as I'm concerned, these people should just be allowed to get their time extension and move along.
I have to say, I agree with Rosalie. If this, if there was an actual ordinance that was under consideration, we might have a different discussion. But right now, we're just talking about, well, at some point, somebody might come by with a thing and maybe we have to, that's ridiculous. We have in front of us an application that's been approved, all they need is an extension, and to hold it up for some future possible thing, I think, is ridiculous.
I concur.
I had a question.
You'll come. Matt?
Yeah? Well, I would say I concur too. I, you know, I have a feeling for the cultural resources always, and, you know, I question on the, on the, the new development, what kind of grading is going to be done, you know, is there, with the new building, disturbing natural cultural resources? That's just a question I have, but otherwise I concur with just getting this ahead.
So you're asking what-
If there's anything-
In terms of foundation work-
Yeah, foundation work and stuff, you know, there's, there's an existing structure there and-
No, not anymore. It's-
Well, there wa, there was something there, yeah. So there was a foundation, there was disturbance and so on. And, you know, as was mentioned in the public hearing, that there was no review done. I looked at Ashley here in the original, there was nothing to say that there was someone on, on site.
So, okay, so here we are in July of 2015. This was approved back in 2014, when things were much different and policies were what they are still today. But, you know, generally speaking, and what I understand, because I've only been here 18 months, that this has been going on for years and years and years here in Ojai, that they use this map. So what happens is, when something comes in, they look for the, for the map, and they look to see where it is in proximity to that, okay? This is well beyond thousands of feet away from the site on, any site on that map. Ergo, that's the review that's done. I've said this over and over and over again, it's confidential, we can't give you a copy of the map, it's not what we're, that's, these are all changing, all these rules are in flex now with this AB 52. Okay? So when this project was approved, we followed the protocol this department has had, the city has had, and the city manager direction was at the time. So when questions were brought up in February, the, the bite at the apple, so to speak, is what's known by government, was already passed. There's no way to open up a project that's been approved and say, oh, oh, we approved you, let me take away your approval in December because somebody here in February has concerns. I can't do that. I don't have the ability to do that. So, you know, there were inquiries made on projects that were, that were already approved in the past. I have not, the negotiations that have been gone, that being performed with the tribe and the tribe's group of people, I've been down with the city attorneys, they have not been through me. They have been assuring me that they're meeting all their needs and listening to all their issues about projects. That has none, that has been all completely taken away from me and given to the city attorneys. It wasn't party to any of these, these things that are going on or the urgency ordinance. So I can't speak to why they're not getting their answers, because that was that whole work product has all been taken away from me months ago. All I'm doing is continuing to ask the city manager, am I operating, what policies am I operating under, which ones am I or am I not? And I continue to ask him repeatedly as this issue continues to be aired out every public hearing, what do you want me to do? And I have continued to get the same direction from him. Until things change, you're doing the things that I want you to do. Ergo, that's why the extension was brought forward to you tonight, the way it was brought forward to you, because that's how we would normally do it. The analysis was done in December, it went through its challenge period, you know, nothing was said. Something comes up in February, it never occurred to me that, to write in there to deny the time extension, because I knew this gentleman was just days away from pooling. But, you know, I could see very well that, that, that that could have been an option if the policies had changed. Like I said before, then we would be happy to bring that forward and ask for denial. But I, I think that I just want to make sure that everyone here understands that all the way the environmental has been done on every project I brought, I bring before you is the way that the city's policies are in direct collaboration with the city manager, and I'm not bringing things before you willy-nilly or not performing sequel analysis on it. It is to date the way I've been instructed to do it. And I just want to make that very clear, because that continues to be brought up in the public hearings, that I'm not doing my job, and I have checked and rechecked and rechecked and rechecked. And until someone tells me something different, that's what I'm doing for you. So I don't know how much more clear I can make it than that.
Go ahead, Mr. Jowski.
Um, thank you, Ms. Wald. I mean, I completely agree with the rest of my commissioners. I feel it's, I feel, with all due respect to Mr. Clark, I feel it's unfair to put the planning commission in such a position. I feel if city council wants to play some moratorium on all building projects until they figure this out, it's their discretion to do so. I don't think it's our deal. It seems like this is kind of what they're saying, and maybe we should just postpone our planning commission meetings until the city council figures out what we want to do here, and we can just hold all construction projects in Ojai until we do that. Because, I mean, what are we doing? These folks have been completely in compliance, from all evidence I've seen. They had their, all their ducks in order before July 1st, so I don't even understand what this is about. So that's where I stand. And I thank Ms. Wald for her patience and tenacity in going through this process, because it must be frustrating at every turn to have somebody questioning your integrity and intelligence and experience. Thank you.
I have a general question. I had it earlier and it came back to me. It was mentioned that in the previous conditions of approval there, I believe, was nothing mentioned in regards to someone being on site if a cultural or historical resource was discovered. I don't know that we have a copy of that, so I don't have a reference.
Yes, you have a copy.
Do we have a copy of that?
You have a copy of the, of the conditions, I think. We didn't change them.
Okay.
And you can give them a time extension, and I believe you can just add those conditions. Again, we're going back, you know, eight months, and things have changed in those eight months, and we now routinely put all those conditions on there.
I just found.
Again, you know, I think, I think that, that in this particular case, because it had a house there before, and it's going primarily back in the same, it's a very small rectangle, internal grid type lot, you know, this isn't, and because it's not in a heightened location per the map, it wasn't thought to do that. And again, I will reiterate that the state, the state guidelines are such that regardless of whether or not I put them on as conditions, there are laws they have to follow.
That was my question.
The reason that we put them in, we're redundant, is because we want to make sure everybody, we keep on telling people over and over and over again, so they actually know. We, we've had to stop projects in here in the last six months because people say they're going to get a monitor out there and they don't. I mean, we continually have to go out and kind of heavy-handed enforce this with people. So I don't, I think you could very well put that condition in here with the time extension, and I'm sure that the applicant would agree to it, or you can ask him that if something is discovered, they would cease and desist and, and have a monitor out there and archaeologists to evaluate the site.
So basically, yeah, my question was, by default, by state law, whether you have the condition in there or not, that is what stands.
Right.
If something is discovered or you would have to-
I think it's still a good practice, because like I said-
Right.
You know, we're kind of an educational arm too. We try to get people to understand, and, and, and even as far as staff is concerned, we get really busy, and if it's in here, it's just always a tickler and a reminder. So I think it can be added, and there's no harm, no foul in adding it, and it certainly doesn't substantially change this project in any way. And I think it's probably prudent.
Okay. Thank you.
I really don't have much to add. I, I think we, first of all, I think we all have appreciation for our community's cultural and historical resources. That goes without saying. In this particular case, I see enforcing something like this upon an applicant at this point in time after he's complied, is in compliance with the current, the policy that was current at the time, approved, creates an undue, an unfair hardship. It just, it just doesn't add up for me that he should have, the applicant should have to pay a price for something that is, essentially would be denied for a future ordinance that we have yet to see, hear about. It, it just doesn't compute. So that's, that's where I stand on it. I think we're ready for a, a motion.
I'll make a motion, that we adopt PC resolution approving time extension for design review permit, DRP 1412, and conditional use permit, CUP 14-05.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Merk?
Yes.
Giagiella?
Yes.
Zabella?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Densh. So that brings us to our next item, which is a discussion item, surrounding the Libby Park Playground Design Review. We're going to receive a presentation this evening, it looks like, from our Public Works Director, Greg Grant. And staff, would you like to segue, or should we just wait for Greg? I think Greg's ready to go.
So, um, we're really happy Greg's here tonight, because he's been really pushing hard on this project. And I think you have a PowerPoint, don't you?
Yes, I do.
So he's gonna, he's gonna wow you with his great PowerPoint slides. So here's Craig.
All right. Good, good evening, chair and commissioners. Appreciate your time. Well, I think you've all been fairly aware of the project coming along, and we've been, started this back in May, and we've been through a few cycles, talking to the commissions. We've been through all the commissions at the city, and I think even you folks at the last review were generally supportive of the project. And I think also Commissioner Lajowski's been at several meetings, going through the design and so on.
But let me clarify, as a member at large, not as a planning commissioner.
Right, yes. And Commissioner Nicklin was more recently appointed to be the representative on the design review. Unfortunately, probably, I'm not sure if it was a hiccup in the way we invited or what, but I don't think he was properly informed, so sorry about that. And I think that Commissioner Nolan was at the previous meeting before we had that going. And I think even Commissioner Foster, didn't you even show up at some of that?
You asked, but-
So, we've had pretty significant outreach in general. You know, we've had this public outreach where we had a, we went to the Topa Topa School and had all the kids with their input and so on. And then the afternoon, we had an open house over at the Ojai Valley Women's Club, and we had pretty good attendance to that as well. And then we had the consultant go through and draft up their design, and then display it to the community, and that was pretty good attendance that night as well. So we've been through a couple cycles of this and tried to incorporate all of the comments. I think in general, the comments were to try to keep the colors subdued, we don't want anything too bright. There's a question to try to, at one point, of maybe going to some kind of themes, and everybody agreed that not make it corny, try to keep it kind of a basic style of playground. This is all custom-built, so we're trying to keep it, you'll see a few photo, schematics of it, a couple renderings. But, so nothing corny, I guess, is an easy way to put it. There was a couple other comments that came up before, that they would blend in with the general character of the Libby Park, that it would be, again, muted colors, more natural colors. I think last time, the Design Review Committee was focused on trying to match the oak tree colors, use the browns, light browns, and the dark and light greens that are in the live oak trees. And then try to keep the scale roughly within the existing borders. And although there was no opposition to moving it to the north a little bit into a mulched area where there's a tree on the north side of the playground existing, and there was a minor movement on the very south end where the tot lot is right now, outside of the existing curb. And there was a desire, everybody seemed to support this turf hill that I think some people had seen before up at the Santa Barbara Playground. They have this, it's kind of a mound with artificial turf on it, and the kids all slide down it with cardboard and things. So that actually is outside the border a little bit. And I think it's important to mention, all of this will be engineered wood fiber, so it's very porous, and all the reins and so on go right through it, so it should not have a significant impact on the trees. Although we're having an arborist consult as well to make sure that we don't have any impact, impact on the adjacent trees. And, and, let me see, I think that was primarily it. We did have an initial draft that you haven't seen yet, an interim draft of the design, and I think the Design Review Committee focused on trying to flatten out the roof lines to improve the aesthetics, as well as improve the amount of shade that's available for the kids, and that trying to go towards a craftsman roofline, some kind of a craftsman appearance of it, which is kind of an open interpretable thing, but in general, that was the idea. The consultant responded that if it's too flat, that it can be kind of an attractive nuisance for hooligans and so on to hop up on the roof and be an issue up there. And, because it is a low roof, it's kind of easy to get to, even the kids. And so I think along with that, maybe the last mention would be that the undulating, undulating mosaic seating feature, we went to the Art Commission, and they've dedicated an art committee to overseeing this work. So there's an RFP going out this Friday for an artist to design this mosaic seating feature. And we're hopefully going to have an applicant that's on a separate project who has to provide their art feature. They, they're interested in dedicating their money towards this portion of the project, this art feature. So that could be a substantial amount of money up in the $25,000 range or so. And that would pay for the artist's design and so on. If not, it's still some money within our budget that we can handle, and the Art Commission is considering, considering some of their public art money they have in a fund. So I think that's kind of the basic review to date, and we are intending to take this to the city council on July 28th. And that would be for their approval, because we need to move along on purchasing the materials to move this project ahead. So this, this was an initial concept by the designer, but it was a rough concept thrown out, and there's been a lot of discussion based on this. People thought the colors aren't, are too bright before they'd heard about the colors significantly. And he did kind of a whimsical design where you can see things are intentionally off-kilter a little bit, which actually is kind of hard to build that way. But there was concern about it being too whimsical, so most people want to see these, the Design Review Committee would like to see these roof lines flattened out as much as possible, and be less whimsical, more craftsman-like, and then, and mute the colors down to kind of the more natural colors. So it still shows the basic design concept of what things would appear like. But it's mostly, we're talking about roofing details, about what the gable end looks like and, and how flat the roofline is. And this you saw before, but it's the general layout. So downward says schematic plan, the word "plan" is where you come through from the fountain area through the two pilasters. And you can see, I think I went through all those features, I won't go through that again. But it's a general, same curb as it was previous. And I think the idea with this was, I guess I was hoping I could move a cursor, but I guess I can't. But on the very north side where there's a swing up there, that's a tot lot swing, and that required that it bumps out a few feet to the side there, about four feet, I think, over to the east side. And then on the very north side, which is the bottom of the drawing, you can see a circular component there. It's just kind of this neat quad pod spinner that you might have heard of in your playground journeys. And that, it has to expand that area down, you can see the existing curb is just north of there, it's an undulating curb, and that curb will go down further. There's been, one of the comments also was that they'd like to see a zip line. So the designer has added an optional zip line just to the north of that, just on the bottom of the page. And the very bottom of the page, on the edge of that green, is a, a split rail fence that's out there, you might know at the playground. So that split rail fence is where it would have to expand to the border if we're going to add the zip line out down there. So in general, that's the design that was initial. And then, this is a little hard to read, but it's a schematic that shows some minor revisions. And then, this is a little hard to read, but it's a schematic that shows some minor revisions. I think the better one to look at is this one. It's a three-dimensional view of what the latest design is at. So, you can see, again, coming off the bottom of the page is walking from that fountain area where the pilasters there. And you can see the three-dimensional view of that there. And it's, probably, this does give you a nice general concept to it, but it's still a little steep, the roof lines, the desire is to flatten out and have more craftsman-like roof lines. And the, kind of the middle right of the page is where there's a playground sandbox with a roof over it. And that, and to develop a little bit more of a craftsman look, to that, that roofing area. And from that roofed area, for the sandbox area, directly to the left of the page or to the east, that's the undulating wall that the artist is going to design. They're RFPing that feature. And they'll have that coming back from that designer. I think that's due in mid-August, so work can start in early September. But you can see there's shade over the tot playground on the very top side. And you can see just, just below or to the left of that tot, covered tot swing on the very top area, that's the turf slide hill right there. It's a little bit outside, it's outside of the curbed area. You can see further down, there's the, on the outside of the curbed area, that's a covered benched area, it's an arbor over the top of it. And so, I think that's fairly complete. They were trying to get the colors in today, they weren't able to. I think they're actually, they just missed the ability to get this in for this one. And so, I'm, so that kind of shows that fairly well. If anybody wanted to look at it closer, I can actually pop out of this mode and zoom in a little bit closer. So, I think that's kind of the general features there. And glad to answer any comments or input.
So, I think what I'm seeing is you have a big kids' playground and a little kids' playground here. That's the tot, and it's kind of demised by that undulating mosaic wall. Is that sort of formed that, that upper area there? Is that what that intent is?
Tot to the top and five through 12 on the bottom.
And that would be some concrete with actual mosaic tiles? That's what that is?
That part's really wide open to, through the artist's design. So, that's the part where the art, Public Arts Committee, even though this project's not subject to it, we're following those general guidelines, so it's not the formality of the code. But it is to have this undulating wall roughly in concept designed by this artist. And so, there's a good chance there'd be a tiled wall with all kind of custom tile on it. And it may undulate or have different features they come up with. As well as just on this side of the big roof sandbox area, that's supposed to be an art and history and music wall. It's got a few features there.
Looks like a lot of things to do and a lot of fun for...
What is the playground surface through the pavement? What is?
It'll remain what it is.
Yeah.
It'll remain the engineered wood fiber. We looked at doing the port-in-place rubber, which is pretty popular now, but very expensive. And that, that'll blow half of our budget at least to do that surface. As well as, it turns out, it's a much harder surface that kids actually get hurt more on that material is kind of twice as hard as sand or the, the wood, wood fiber. So, the sand is not actually something you can do in new playgrounds. It doesn't meet the ADA requirements, and, but the wood fiber does.
Thank you.
It's a discussion, any questions?
Well, yeah, I'm curious about the, the planning commissioner, the planning commission's role in this. We're commenting on colors and, well, they have a group that is planning the colors and the roof lines and all that. Is this going to all come before us at some point for us, for our final approval? Or is this in someone else's hands? I'm just curious.
Right, and that's not the intention. And really, this is a city's playground project. So, we are soliciting input from all the commissions. And we're trying to listen carefully for all the input. But we're, we're not, I guess, is this commission in particular is more accustomed to these approvals and so on, this is not the case. This is more of a city's public works project, which is even Parks and Rec Department as well. And so, we're soliciting input. And we want to make sure the council knows that we have solicited all the input, and we've worked thoroughly with community input and a Design Review Committee and tried to implement all the comments that we can as much as possible.
I think it's fantastic, by the way.
Thanks.
Just, just judging from the few meetings I've been through, I mean, it's an exhausting, an exhaustive design review process. And I commend Greg on his diligence going through this, I mean, dealing with all these folks. I mean, there's hundreds of folks, dozens of, you know, different interests and commissions. And everybody's got a story and an opinion and their own agendas, you know. So, wading through it is, is probably, this will probably be one of the most complicated projects you'll ever do, you know? It's just, but doing a good job, and the commission, the steering committee's doing a really great job. Like I said, I'm just helping raise money, but everybody else is really on it. And they're doing a great job. I think it's going to be great for the kids. So, thank you.
It seems generally supportive. We haven't really heard any big obstacles or objections to anything. I think we're just trying to incorporate all the comments, and that seems to be coming pretty well. And maybe the bigger thing is just this last option where they wanted, they responded to our comments where we were requesting this, all the kids wanted a zip line. So, that is the option to put that on the very north side. So, it's right where that colorful play-by-design is. If you know it out there, there's a split rail fence. And it would probably go up to the edge of that split rail fence. It may even encroach on the grass a little bit. I was trying to get that defined on the plan. So, it generally stays within the limits of all the curb area that's out there. And it does have more activity than is there right now. And we hope it'll be very, or we assure you, it'll be a very attractive playground with nice natural colors and a lot of nice elements. And if we can get enough volunteers to build it, I think it'll actually happen to be a grand opening for Ojai Day.
Of next year?
This year.
This year?
That's why we're under this push.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So, you guys are ready to go with construction here?
Kind of, yeah.
Getting close?
We're getting close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, that's what July, July 28th is all about, the council approving the budget, and, not the budget, but approving the design and authorizing expenditures of all the materials we need to have delivered in time for this build to occur.
Great. Well, I thank you, Greg, for your presentation, bringing us up to speed.
Okay, sounds like in general, everybody's pretty good and, no, I don't hear any...
I think it's a great project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to know what a gaga pit is, before you go. What is that?
I thought it was...
What, a gaga pit?
Something where you pass the kid up front, I think, and then...
It is a pertinent question.
But I think, do you know what it is?
Some of the city councils are going to want to regulate...
No, I was actually, while you were addressing that, I wanted to know how many hooligans there are in town.
Right. There is concern about the hooligan factor. That's, that's, could be a problem. We do have a fair amount, yeah. The count varies, I would say from five to 25, approximately. And I think that gaga pit is some game that's very popular. I think at Topa Topa School, they have a gaga pit right now. I think that's the school. And it's something where they all sit in this little walled pit, and they push a ball around back and forth and try to get it past each other. And I guess it's the popular game for kids right now.
We got one at OVS, yeah. It's like an octagon, and they like throw a ball at each other. It's some, yeah.
Modified dodgeball or something?
Something like that. The kids love it.
Yeah, they do have it at Miners Oak School too. So, you're right, I think it's really popular.
It's really underneath that building, and there was some thought of, well, what if that is not popular in a few years? It's still a shaded area, and it's a great spot for kids to hang out underneath the, that tree fort area, the big one. All right, well, thanks very much for your...
All right. Thank you, Greg. Okay. We may have to have one of our meetings there. Let's see, that brings us...
Should be a joint meeting with the City Council.
Meeting at the gaga pit. Well, that brings us to informational items. We have directory, we'll start off with directory report and director actions, Kathleen.
Okay, so, not many decisions this, this, go around, just one for the banner from MAME. I guess you guys all know it's probably open now, right, the play, isn't it? Yeah. Moving on to the, did I skip something? I don't think I did, did I? No, moving on to the code enforcement action, I just, you know, we kind of go through this every week, or every two weeks. So, I don't think that there's anything really noteworthy, other than, I think we're just, you know, routinely getting more cases and getting them resolved. You know, they're just having a proactive code enforcement. We were able to stop things before they actually get in. Wouldn't you say, Sherri? I say we kind of catch things a little bit earlier, a little bit easier to resolve cases in some respects, and not been there for years and not entrenched and that kind of stuff. So, I'm open to any questions you might have on that one.
Well, I think there's been a significant change since we acquired our code enforcement officer.
Right.
It's definitely a positive thing.
So, moving on to the next agenda, August 5th was, you did continue the Cal Solar Electric project to August 5th. We have reached out to the applicant and asked that he submit his, his materials in with sufficient time for us to review them. And he's indicated that he probably won't make that deadline. We tried to explain to him that, you know, our packets go out, you know, the Friday before the meeting, and we have to have at least a week to review the materials in order to get some kind of synopsis together for you for a staff report. So, we're not sure at this point. We're still trying to work with him because he did, we did ask him, and he did say he could make that date. But I'm just, and then we have a time extension for 602 East Oak Street, Mount Vista Minor. I don't know what the situation would be with that one. Again, I just don't know. I mean, no, so that may have to be pulled off. Going down through the list, we are still working with the DRP 1420 to get them complete. They are still incomplete. And we are telling them that they are close to an ARC site. They need to do a Phase One and an initial study. And they are refusing at this point. I don't know, some talks about him actually agreeing to do a Phase One, and some talks about him not. I'm not sure he's, I was under the impression he didn't want to do it. The city manager's under the impression he wants to do it. So, I don't know where that's going. But I'm trying to give you some background as to why these things are not moving forward. But we're spending an enormous amount of staff time on them. So, while they sit on here and it looks like we're not doing anything, it's hours and hours and hours working on these projects. The hospital has resubmitted, but their resubmit is incomplete, fragmented. We continue to work with them. The 1105 North Signal, I think we've been working with them. I think they're very close to being complete. Fragmental, resubmitts back from incomplete letter. Again, they will have extensive environmental review when they come in, but they are not complete for processing. I do want to add this, when somebody is not complete for processing, we do not route them out to other agencies. When you have incomplete information, we can't send that out to people and have them begin review and not have the full entire picture that we need as far as project descriptions. I mean, we need to wait until we have a fully vetted, complete project with a fully vetted description before we start sending them out. So, that might be some of the reasons that we continue to get this criticism of not routing out. The routing out occurs when the project is complete for processing. Many of these process, the projects take two, three, four incomplete letters to get the people to actually complete their submittals in a way where it's got enough materials, that there's enough information there, you can actually do environmental review or landscape review or architectural review. So, we continue to work on that. My understanding is, we have a contract, one of our contract planners working on Bryant Circle Rezone, and that's going well. And again, we know that we're doing an environmental document with that because we need to. And then, this new ones that came in were the Cottage of Among the Flowers modification. And then, we have a subdivision on Drown Avenue that we've worked on and again, it's incomplete. Not sufficient information for, you know, I mean, we continue to get unskilled plans and plans that don't, you know, and so I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to make sure you guys understand that I'm trying to bring information to you, saying often I get, you guys have given me feedback, that the submittals really aren't detailed enough. And I'm really working really hard to get you those kind of submittals where you can take action up here and not have to design or be put in a position that you have long meetings where you're designing. And so, with that, we just move on to the liaison rotation list. And I'm open to any modifications or changes, comments that you have on that?
When will, when will I know about the Building Appeals Board meeting? It says tentative.
Oh, well, since this is in...
What says tentative?
T tentative. Since this is going, it is going on that night. And it, yes. We are at this moment still waiting for an item to come in from the city attorney. And so, you know, at some point, whether there's one or two or three items on the, on the... But yes, but it is going. And last night at the City Council meeting, I, they brought up the issue of BABS reviewing fences heights and, fences, walls and hedges, I'm sorry. And so, I know that we have our liaison here, you may want to speak to that about what, some of the things that they'll be doing at the BABS. So, there's no changes to the rotation list or anything?
Well, I see a, I think I see a mistake here.
Okay, go ahead.
It says under, for the next City Council meeting, first of all, it said July 14th, which was yesterday, and had Chester's...
And he...
...there, which he did attend.
Right.
So, but this is for the next City Council meeting, which would be the 28th, and that should be Commissioner Lajowski. So, make that correction.
Isn't it on there?
It's on there.
That's under Planning Commission Liaison Reports, if you look at the...
Oh, on the agenda, it's wrong?
It does, it's not, it's not jiving with your list. The rotation list, we're one behind. So, we'll just make that correction. But I think that's...
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wrong.
So, nobody has any issues with the, okay, great. Okay. And then, and I just want to appreciate, I give everybody my appreciation for how well the joint meeting went the other night. I was really happy with that. That was really good, I thought.
Okay, so, reports. Chester, you attended the City Council meeting last night, would you like to open up?
Yes, and I think the most relevant item last night was the affordable housing. And since we have William here, I'd love to have him come up and actually speak to it.
Sure.
Give us a brief on that, if you would.
Yeah, thanks for coming last night, I appreciate that. It was a very interesting, I thought, set of public comments on the affordable housing issue. Did you stay for the whole thing? I didn't...
I faded about 9:45, 9:50.
Exactly, it went on for a while. But it was a very interesting set of comments, fairly wide-ranging, from a lot of different perspectives in the community. And it was, so that was pretty interesting. And the council is looking, there are two parcels that the council's looking at in terms of proceeding with a concept review. And the concept review would involve parcel 10, which is right behind City Hall, and parcel 11, which is part of the public, is south of the Public Works Yard. And the commitment that was made by council was to affirm that, you know, we're serious, basically that we're seriously committed to looking at, at these options and to engage people's housing in doing a concept review on both sites. There was some issue about the, a lot of discussion, fair amount of discussion about whether parcel 10 actually could or could not be included in that because of deed restriction. And I think where council came down was, and Chester, you, you know, you were there for some of this too, was if there, if there is a way, we want to, want to see if, you know, we want to see if there is a way to do it. Because under, for example, under a development agreement, a public, it may be possible to establish a public purpose for the use of parcel 10 despite the deed restriction, that would render eligible the affordable housing development. So, there's a lot in flux now. But I believe what you, what, what came out of the council deliberations is that the majority of council wants to take a serious look at these two parcels, wants to look at, get a concept review that is then something accessible for the public to react to, to give input to. In other words, rather than something that's just an idea, have an actual idea of how such these two sites could be developed and how they might be set up in terms of an affordable housing development. The People's Group that is going to be doing the concept review has a track record of rather than, of doing more than just building. They do a lot of programming. They, you know, they have a, they can, they can speak better than I can about their entire programming. So, I think it's going to be interesting. If you look back to the workshop, this group did a workshop where they brought in some partners that they use as architects, and they had some interesting approaches that they use for establishing a residential feel, a fit-in feel, if I would say it, to the affordable housing developments. affordable housing developments while still rendering the design, you know, using some cost-saving innovation measures. I think you guys are more appreciative of this than I, and they were, it was interesting, some of the techniques they were using. And I, it's interesting, going to be very interesting, I think, at least me personally, to see how they take the examples that they were giving us in that workshop and apply it to these two sites, and then see how the, how the public, you know, reacts to that, how the public takes that. So I, I think that's kind of a good summary. Yeah, go ahead, I mean...
Site 10, Lot 10, isn't it, isn't it, how big is it?
It's the larger one. Do you know that...
Eight acres, right. Versus, versus 11, which is 1.5.
Which is a lot smaller, yeah, exactly. And it's basically just behind City Hall.
It's really the perfect lot to do it.
It's the, it's the more preferred site because of the size. One of the things that came out is, in most of the old workshop in last night, I had a question on this, and my understanding of it, I asked if this perception was accurate, and they said it was, is that there is a, there are some economies of scale issues here. In other words, part of the affordability is building enough units at a time that you get the cost down low enough to help...
Wasn't it 40? Wasn't it 40?
At least three dozen units, yes. So...
Eleven units and 55 units.
Right, well, the, the 11 units, well, the 11 units was, there was some issue as to whether or not you could, you could do more than 11 if you added 17 and 18 or not, and that's going to be, I think, part of the concept review. But that is a problem. If you get down into the smaller numbers, you run into problems of cost per unit rising and causing a problem for the, pursuing the affordability goals.
Did you perceive that the public was more in favor of the low-income housing? I did.
The public that was there last night was, yes. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, jump to what the public at large feels, but the public that showed up last night was definitely more voices in favor than not in favor, yes. That was clear.
Yeah.
In terms of who showed up and discussed it and offered, and it was, some of the comments were kind of, I thought poignant.
Very good, very good. I really enjoyed the comment from the gentleman who was, was the caregiver.
Yes.
And he really pointed out how hard it is for very important working-class citizens who need to live here and are very important to our community.
Right.
And we need to have some way for them to live here.
We're talking about the character of the community.
Yeah.
And we want to try to manage the character of the community to retain an element that is feeling driven away by the trends in the real estate market. And I think that's part of the, you know, Councilperson Clapp pointed out very appropriately, that it's not just the issue of building affordable housing when we have opportunity to do it, but also making sure affordable housing doesn't get taken, or the supply of residential, whether it's affordable or not, isn't taken away from us in terms of single-family residences being converted to 100%, you know, investor-owned transient rentals.
Right, that, that issue dovetails into it, and that leads to the next question about the second dwelling ordinance.
And precisely, yet again. If we can, that also is part of the whole issue of housing supply. If, for example, we have the ability to do infill with second units on a new construction conforming basis, that would have more, and if they're not going into the transient rental pool...
Yeah, that's...
Then they increase the housing supply, hopefully, for people in the, that otherwise would feel there was no option but not to be able to live here.
Right, yeah, there's two major, I think, issues with that ordinance. One is the inability to have a variance option to approve a, there's a lot of non-conforming properties here in Ojai. That should, we should have a variance option like we have for guest houses, number one, and number two, we should increase the size to the 1,200 square foot, which will increase more bedrooms, more spaces.
Exactly.
Based on lot line, or the ability to maintain setbacks.
Exactly. If the, if the lot size is sufficient and other zoning issues are consistently followed, exactly going to 1,200 certainly allows a lot of options that 640 does not.
So is the city council thinking of moving that forward?
Yes, on top of everything else that's in the mix. I appreciated your, you bringing that forward, so it certainly got our attention. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, while you're there, Bill.
I mean, any other questions about the affordable matter? I mean, it's, it's an interesting...
Well, I guess it kind of, it's interesting how this all weaves together, you know?
Yes.
From affordable housing to, you know, second dwelling...
Second units of affordable housing, it's all...
To vacation rentals. And the week before last, we had a, there was a workshop on vacation rentals.
Yes.
And which, which I, it was, it was interesting, you know, it was, it was well-organized. There was certainly a contingency of representatives of various viewpoints at that meeting, which was interesting. Can you update us as to what we're to expect next?
Yes. Ms. Clark took some time off last week, so we're either later this week, I spoke with him at the meeting, after the meeting, either later this week or possibly next week, we're going to be pulling together with Councilperson Clapp, a small task force meeting about getting, going through the action items that came out of that workshop. A primary, which is to do a further solicitation of input from the community as to their preferences, you know, hosted, non-hosted, you know, nothing, regulated, permissive, et cetera. Try to, try to broaden the range of input, because while there was good participation at the workshop, it's still just that group that showed up. So we're going to try to get into another public input phase, and then there's, I believe there's going to be, there's supposed to be a report that formalizes everything that was on the white papers, you know, on the display boards, and puts that into a form that's, that's more adjustable and distributable to, to everybody. So I think that we're going to, also we continue to buy, that we continue to get information as to what's going on legally, both at the state legislature and with other ordinances in other cities. So out of all of this, I think we're going to distill something that makes sense for Ojai, you know, in a deliberate fashion.
Good information.
I can, I can tell you, I'm going to venture one opinion. What I have, the, the people that I run into, all right, which is a subset, obviously, but the feedback that I'm getting, for however filtered by those that are talking to me, is that most people seem to, that agree that if you, if you do transient rentals, it should be, or vacation rentals, you should be licensed to do it, and you should pay the TOT, just like, you know, so you're on the same playing field with hotels and motels. And then the, the third thing that I get again and again and again is, kind of see the rationale for if you're living here and you have a guest house and you have a room and you're a resident of the city and you live on the property, hosted. I think people see that as being consistent with the character. It's the non-hosted that I get again and again, people saying, we don't want to have non-hosted.
So the idea of investment property?
Yes.
People coming to buy properties so they can rent them out?
Yes.
For income.
And that's what I, that's what I'm getting. I'm not saying that's the...
I get the same, I get the same feedback from just about everybody I talk to as well.
You know, so of course, that's all, you know, that, that's going to be coming.
Right.
Because again, it's fundamentally a zoning issue. But these are, you know, this is the challenge of our, of our time. You know, every, Ojai faces a challenge with its success almost in every era, and this is the challenge we face now. I'm sure most of you probably now have seen that New York Times article, which is on top of the Conde Nast article last fall, and you realize this is becoming...
There's a change going on.
A very, not just national, but internationally known destination. And how do we manage that to avoid just being, you know, a tourist-only city? We want to be a community. And, and how do we, you know, how do we manage the success and of being, of defining ourselves somewhat apart from the rest of Southern California that everybody seems to want to come to?
And keep our general plan intact.
Exactly, the residential character, the general plan residential character. So it's the, it's the challenge of our time, and we face it on many different dimensions right now, I think.
So if you haven't seen it, there is a, there was an article in the New York Times about our, our city.
Right.
Certain subset of our city.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point.
Apparently, the only restaurants in town are the Hip Fagan Restaurant and the Farmer and the Cook, and there's nothing else.
And nothing else, hardly any other options to eat at, yeah.
It paints a, a partial picture.
So it's, it's interesting. Just, just anecdotally, you know, we deal with vendors around Southern California in our larger family business, and increasingly, I'm getting them calling, saying, "You live in Ojai, right? Oh, yeah, we're coming up there this weekend. That's where we go for our getaway whenever we can." I mean, I'm just getting that more and more. It's, it's somewhat, you know, if we, oh, there's 600 rooms, I believe, capacity inside the city limits, and they're filled up most every weekend. So think of, just do the math, you know? Fifty times, let's say 50 weeks, weekends times 600, what do you think the normal occupancy is? I would say probably two, not one. That would be a business traveler, it would be two. It's a lot of people per year, just in the hotels.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Not to mention the people driving in and, you know, et cetera. So you want me to go on with my other liaison comments or just wind all this up? I was just talking with, with Mr. Grant. If you know of any church group, nonprofit, or just anybody that wants to use the old playground, apparently the city is still looking for proposals to recycle the old playground. It's still a nice playground. And I did contact Steve Bennett to see if Soul Park wanted it, and they said, "No, we have enough playgrounds out there." That's what they said. So, yeah, I don't agree, but I'm saying is that if you are aware of any group that would like to, you know, the, they have to have the capacity to take it down and move it. That's the big thing. But I'd hate to see it go to waste. It's still a nice playground.
Sure, it's an opportunity for someone.
You know, anywhere in the valley, doesn't have to be within the city limits, just anywhere in the valley, so if any...
They would just come to city, Cheryl.
Approach, come to Parry Works or Sherri and, and, you know, make a proposal.
Sure.
You know, schools, whatever. On the, on the issue with the BAB, the way that came, there was a discussion about the issue of scope and focus and et cetera, et cetera. I believe the two agenda items on the BAB right now are going to be the solarizing and the vacant building ordinance review, and then this was on, on top of that. Where the council came down, and again, it's always dangerous for me to speak to a majority when I'm just one, but Mr. Councilperson Blatts and Councilperson Haney made the point that the Complete Streets effort had specifically asked for input from a broad input, and so while there was some discussion of making sure about Mission Creep, they felt like the solicitation had been made as part of the neighborhood planning and Complete Streets process, very broad-based, and so therefore that justified asking everybody for their input. If I can summarize, that's what I heard.
So they're basically, they're just going to come up with comments and suggestions at this point?
Exactly.
And then bring it back to what the city council...
Yes, exactly.
Regarding wall, or wall height fencing and hedges.
Yeah, from, from the neighborhood planning perspective.
Okay, yeah, because we continue to discuss that at Complete Streets, it's still a hot topic.
And, yes, speaking of, and I, I'll just make one other comment personally. There was a protocol put out, the, the city council rejected the idea of, you know, doing the enforcement in, in favor of concentrating on safety issues, the traffic visibility triangles, and I believe the protocol that was put out by the city manager is still complaint-based rather than go and find problems. And I got to tell you, I've gone out just riding my bicycle, taking pictures of things that scare me in terms of some of these corners, where the hedges are up 10, 12 feet and they're, they're right out, they're, some of them are groaning around the stop sign. And the idea of a kid, you've seen these kids blowing through town on their bicycles, not stopping at stop signs, and I, I'm just a little scared, frankly, that, that, you know, we need to maybe be a little more proactive on some of these corners where I know people don't want to go to a property owner and say, you know, you need to take your hedge down to three feet, and then the other hand, you're saying, "Yeah, but your hedge is growing around the stop sign." I'm, this is just a personal opinion, one councilperson's opinion. So, you know, I've, I've actually started to take pictures and forwarding them to the city manager's office and say, you know, this one looks pretty dangerous to me.
Well, you might pass those along to the Complete Streets Committee and we can...
Right.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking about this because we had this discussion at our last Complete Streets, and I was thinking, an approach we may want to take is to concentrate on our main corridors, which we tend to concentrate on anyway, and those are basically the travel routes, whether you're on bike, you're walking...
Right.
Kind of the funnel routes to get you into town or out. So it might be a good, good way to start, and then always, it's all about safety.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's our general approach.
And I think everybody can think of their own example of what I just described. You know, they, we do have them.
Right.
Around town, you know. And then, let's see, I guess that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Wire. We can introduce other items for discussion at this point in time? Anyone like to, as a fighting commission, anything on their...
I'd love to hear more about this urgency ordinance.
Yeah, I personally... I personally don't have any information to give to you on it. I mean, I just know that it's in the works because as we, as we've heard, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting, we're having the same people come up and talk, the, all I can really tell you is that originally, the idea was that our new city attorney and his firm were working on a white paper to help us implement AB 52, because it is a new state law, became effective July 1st, and it has some really specific routing and just some details to that are pretty specific. And so we wanted to make sure we were in compliance, and so they wrote a white paper. Then I know that the city attorneys have been working and meeting with the Native Americans and their group, and I don't really, I'm not privy to any of the outcomes of any of that because I've not been involved. So, but I just know that that's the issue. Last night, I think Julie Toomite stood at public comment and indicated, "Thank you so much for meeting with us and working on us on these new protocols," and I know that it's in the works, but that's really all I know, you know? So I can't really give you any other details.
You, you don't know how it was crafted?
No, I just know that, it's, like I tried to explain earlier, I haven't really been party to any of that collaboration or consultation with the tribes on what they're, what they're, other than, you know, what I hear when I go to city council or, and Mr. Wirewax here, he can speak to it, I know that they've talked about it, and I know that some of the, I don't want to speak for them, but I know that the issue is whether or not we are going to go to the level of AB 52 or above and beyond and have more restrictive laws in the state, and then the state required. I think the council's talked about that. All I've really heard has been either through where I've been in city council meetings or here or any other time they've spoken, but I know that generally speaking, the position of the tribe has been what they have indicate, or what Don Teeding said today, which is they want every project, whether it's ministerial or not, to have a Phase 1. They have put, was it today we got that letter from the tribe, asking again that every project in the city of Ojai be routed to them and for consultation? So that's kind of all I know at this point in time, and like I said, Councilwoman Wirewax might, might know more. I don't, that's all I know.
Okay, maybe, Bill, I'll ask you then. How was this crafted? Who was present?
I haven't seen a draft, I haven't seen any draft. I, I've heard about it for the first time the day before yesterday.
Yeah, my question is, who was present when it was crafted?
I believe that the person who's acting as pro bono counsel for the Cultural Resources Group met with the city attorneys, and I wasn't at these meetings. I believe Mayor Lara was, perhaps it's one or, one or something of these, I, I wasn't at that meeting. Was that true?
No, I, I wasn't either, but that, that, I, they had the meeting Thursday before our joint meeting...
Right.
Last Thursday, and Matt was late coming out, and that's kind of where I knew about it.
And so they, I have not, like I said, I've not seen a draft, was a part of that meeting, and my understanding is that the, they are attempting to craft something that's in compliance with AB 52 and the city of Ojai general plan, both at the same time.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing you say is that the city attorney sat... Okay, so, so what I'm hearing you say is that the city attorney sat down with the cultural resources people, but no, no other stakeholders were at that meeting to craft an ordinance?
I believe the city manager, and I believe that Mayor Lara was involved in those discussions, yes.
But, but no stakeholders in terms of other people with projects in process?
Only no applicants, no. Because they're talking not about specific projects, is my understanding. Again, I'm just telling you my understanding. They're talking about what the, what the procedures for consultation would be. And I, and I'm not sure I agree with one thing you said, that, I didn't see this letter you mentioned. I think there is a difference between consultation and having Phase One on every project. I think there is a distinction.
I don't know. I just got it today, but it said they wanted, so the--
Huh?
No, he--
What'd he say? I'm sorry?
You submitted it with them.
No, I did not. I don't think my name's on there. I, I didn't see it.
Oh, okay.
I, I could be wrong, because it just came in today, but the, the, the difficulty in it is that AB 52 requires that we consult on anything that is above a sequoia exemption. And their letter requests consultation, I, I believe, and routing--
There's a, there is a distinction there, Kathleen. The AB 52 requires early consultation, period. Okay? And it also has the lead agency has discretion in defining the resources that would, that are being, are the focus of sensitivity. That's, that's somewhat opened up to the lead agency's definition in AB 52.
Yeah, I don't know.
And, and so what, see, what we're doing here is we're all kind of feeling our way through this new legislation, which is, I've read the legislation, but I'm not an attorney. But it, folk, I know that the, I also read some of the legislative intent synopses. And again, the focus is very much on the early, as possible consultation with tribal representatives. Now, how you express that in terms of policy is, I think, what we're struggling with.
Well, especially in light of what happened tonight.
Well, again, I think the, I'm not going to comment on what happened tonight, because I have to be careful, because I don't know whether or not that's going to come to council or not. I have, I don't know.
Okay, so that sort of begs the question, by urgency ordinance, is this bypassing the planning commission?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure we're, we're talking about an ordinance. If it comes to a, before council, yeah, it would, it would be coming directly to council as an urgency ordinance, yes. That's my understanding of what's being contemplated.
Okay, so, I mean, what about process? What about transparency? These are all things that we hear are so important, and suddenly we have people going behind closed doors and creating an ordinance without the development director, without the other stakeholders, and bypassing the planning commission. That's, that's really concerning to me.
Well, you could express your concern, you know?
I just did.
The, the, again, I believe the point is to, is my understanding, is the, and I want to point out something that was done back in, I don't remember the meeting. There was a meeting of city council back months and months ago, maybe it was January or February. I'm sitting here trying to conjure this up, where the city council provided a direction. Said, "We want to, AB 52 is going, is passed, and it will become effective July 1." Now it's passed. It will become effective July 1. And the city council provide, specifically said, "We want to start behaving, and start acting in the spirit of AB 52 now, even though it's not technically effective until July 1." We provided that direction. Right.
Okay, but--
And AB 52 is fundamentally based on early consultation with, that's, that's the fundamental spirit of AB 52, is, is early consultation with tribal representatives about the situation with, you know, any particular site.
Yeah, I understand. I understand what you're saying. I understand the intent. I appreciate that. I just feel like this commission has been so hammered about transparency and process, that I'm, I'm sort of bewildered as to why this particular issue is a really suspect in, in, on both those counts.
Again, I--
Well, I'm just saying--
--telling you what I know, and I have not sat in on any of the meetings having to do with the drafts, or have not, have not seen a draft of--
Is this on the agenda for the 28th?
I don't think the agenda for the 28th has been posted.
Okay.
No, it hasn't been posted yet. I mean, staff, I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, because it's not been in our planning guide. We get a agenda planning guide for months out ahead of time, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not been on that.
Well, it's just concerning to me, because urgency, to me, sounds like it's happening, and it's going to bypass the planning commission, and I don't think that's right.
The only thing I'll mention about those, that point, is I don't believe this particular ordinance is part of Title X. The, the cultural resources, historic preservation, all of that, that's not part of Title X.
He's, he's right. The cultural resources section of the code isn't part of the zoning ordinance, like the historic preservation, along with the historic preservation section. So I don't know how that's, that's, I don't know, but the, I don't know how they're, like I said, I haven't been involved in any of it. I mean, this has all been deferred to the city attorneys to work out a white paper and to, and develop policies for my staff and myself to use to implement AB 52, and it's, and as yet, I haven't received anything. So that's kind of where we are right now, as far as actual practical implementation policies. But, so I can't really answer that, but he is right. The cultural resources and everything is in section--
Title IV, really?
Title IV, I think. I just, I don't know, because I, I don't know, I don't know how that's going to work, and then how it, how it relates to the environmental review portion of projects. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just, again, in light of what happened tonight, given that we are going to be facing every one of the people who are, all of those applicants who are in process now, I mean, I just think it's kind of a miscarriage, that we don't look at it as well. And especially if the development director wasn't there. That's really concerning to me. I mean--
So noted. Again, I hope you understand my position. I, I don't know. It won't be me. I won't do it. I'm, you know, not this time. It won't be me, but somebody might, might appeal your action night. I don't know. So I really should not comment, if, because it would go to the city council if it is appealed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wire. I, I want to comment on this, just because I have a personal story as a, as an architect. We're currently doing a project, you may know, the Topa Mountain Winery. And an interesting situation arose, and the client was, is more than willing to deal with cultural resources and had monitors on the project, where they did the footprint under excavation, you know, for the, with the five foot over X, meaning five foot beyond the actual building lines, and also went down, I think approximately five feet, and they build it up, right? So I think the way the ordinance is stated, it says, it requires a monitor to be there when any soil is undisturbed, or disturbed, rather. And the interesting fallout from that language is that that was all done with the monitor onboard, watching it for days. And then they go back to dig their footings in the same soil, not as deep as they went before, and were required to have a monitor watch them dig up the dirt that they have already seen dig up once before, and pay for that. Now, to the, the, the tribe's credit, they thought it was utterly ridiculous, but that's how our ordinance is written. And it's these little things that come up that trigger that.
Well, let me clarify that, because I'm going to say the same thing, Councilman Wirewark. Everybody has their own interpretation or memories. We're doing recall here. But in your case, it's a condition of approval. It's not an ordinance. It's a condition of approval that the tribe and their representatives have been repeatedly asking for us to place on projects, any ground disturbance. And we have complied with that. That isn't up to subjectivity. It's very objective, any ground disturbance. And so I'm sorry that people, I'm sorry that people found that to be, the monitor that's on site out there was like, "Well, I've already looked at this dirt." But unfortunately, I'm, don't have the liberty to decide when and where someone's going to decide. It was very literal, and that's how they have asked for--
That's the terminology, the language is, is general, is too general. When you put that word "any" in there--
Correct.
It, common sense and practicality goes out, goes out the window.
Well, as I said to those people, let me just finish, as I--
I'm not here to argue the point, outside to make the point, that there, these are the types of things that need to be addressed.
Well, I just want to clarify--
And we need to have input on that.
Right. Well, I just want to clarify this. The time to challenge your conditions of approval are either during your public hearing, or as Mr. Wirewark has said, or Councilman Wirewark has said, as an appeal, because you don't like it. After that challenge period has expired, and you're in the field, I can't then reinterpret, as a community development director--
I understand your position.
Yes, I just want to make sure that you understand.
I understand your position. It's, it was, it's in the wording. And, yeah, I suppose if we would have been on top of it to the point of where we, you know, did a very thorough legal interpretation of what we were reading, the conditions, we would have said, "Wait a minute, we're going to be digging, we're going to be under excavating for the soils of the building, then we're also going to come back and dig footings." It's, you know, I mean, it gets convoluted quickly.
Well, there's a reasonableness. There's an expectation of reasonableness and sanity and, and, you know, that's what seems to be sort of missing, a balance of other people's interests. I mean, it just, it's just really concerning.
It's a tough, it's a tough night. I mean, I understand Kathleen's position, as she has to, it's written out there. That's, that's, those parameters are set for her, and she has to follow through on that. Does that make them right? Well, there, there's the question that needs to be discussed.
And which is why we should be reviewing it.
Obviously, there's, where is the room for reason in, in these, in these ordinances? And I think it's just something that we can't just blankly accept as it comes across the table. And in a way, it kind of ties into this situation with what's going on with this draft right now. It's being formed by, there's, there's not stakeholders involved. You have staff, and you have a representative of, of the cultural resource community. What about realtors, developers, citizens? Where's their input? Maybe that comes at the, after, at the time of the presentation of the city council? I don't know. But these are questions that are pretty obvious to me that need to be answered. But that's just my comment. I just want, there are situations that exist that are not fair.
Got two comments on your comment.
Please.
Again, I think, I think, listening carefully to Kathleen Wald, conditions of approval is not an ordinance.
Right.
And so that's what you approve. And so I, I think your comments are very well taken as a learning experience for this commission, in terms of the wording that you approve on these things. So that's, that's your job, you know, to approve the, you know, to look at the wording of these conditions of approval. And so that's, that's something, I think, to think about when, when you are engaging in your deliberations and you're, you're passing on these, on these conditions, learning from experience of what hasn't worked, and, and put some reasonableness into them if it needs to happen. The second point I want to make is that the council went and also approved the city attorney contract last night. And in that city attorney contract, there was added language for training, more training, for council, staff, and commissions. And with some special focus was put in that city attorney contract for additional training on all of the land use, sequoia, et cetera, that we all need to know more about. So I think council recognized that we all need to learn more. We all need to learn how to do this in a reasonable and practical fashion. And that was, the scope of the city attorney's contract was specifically, had some added language to address that particular issue.
I think that's a good point. Thank you. And just as another point, I, it's, it's important to understand that I did not vote on my own project, that I was recused from that process. Mr. Lujowski?
Yeah, I just, I don't know where this goes or what, but I just, I mean, as somebody in town is, you know, in the building community, I've heard a giant uptick in the amount of complaints. I mean, builders always complain. Contractors complain all the time about anything. But it, and the difficulty it is to get projects done. And I wonder, what's in our jurisdiction to help facilitate projects forward, rather than, I mean, is it within our purview? I mean, this, what's been talking about tonight about the cultural resources, sounds like going above and beyond, and then another law is, seems like another layer we're putting on top of builders. And I don't know if we have any power to do anything to make it, to try to help facilitate, you know, our local economy, and for local residents and businesses to, you know, to get in business and to do things. I don't, does anybody, no? I mean, do we have any power?
Well, if we don't get a chance to weigh in on this urgency ordinance, we definitely don't.
I'm surprised that this is, this ordinance, AB 52, there's parts of it that doesn't apply to Section 10, which is where we, we have jurisdiction, correct?
Yeah. Okay, so that, that question kind of had a couple of things mixed in there. So AB 52 is a state law that we have to comply with. The city is adopting their own rules and regulations that are--
Over and above.
Over and above, yes.
Right. And see, the over and above, obviously, Native Resources, it applies to construction, it applies to buildings. So I don't know how, how it doesn't apply to the planning commission, as far as our input.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, just to keep the conversation in its right perspective, is like today, you had a viewpoint on a playground, even though you're not taking action. So whether or not, you know, it's at the council's discretion, but if it's something, regardless of whether it's in Section 10 or not, if it's something that they think that you, that you have value in commenting in, then normally it's the city's protocol to involve all the stakeholders, just like we did with the playground. I think it's a really good example. You didn't take action, but your opinion was asked. So I, so I think that that's generally what happens, is even if it's not something legally or technically that you need to respond to, the council would ask for your input, as they are from the VABs regarding fences walls and, and that type of thing. So I think that that's generally how the city tries to operate. In my, in my tenure, I've been here.
Okay.
Hope that happens.
But like, you know how North Carolina's a right-to-work state? I mean, could we be a right-to-build city? I don't know.
No, I'm not a city attorney. We'll have to ask that question next time, Matt, when it comes to your meeting.
I think that, Mac, you bring up a good question, and I think it's one that we can seem to deal with on the planning commission that I've seen over the years, is what, what can we do to facilitate for people who are interested in doing things in our community in terms of building, or, and different uses, uses that, that will help them avoid these pitfalls and unforeseen consequences. And we've talked about, you know, lists and laying it out as best as we can. It's, what's, what I see going on now, there are so many changes in the last two years. I mean, if you lived in this community, working in this community longer than two years, it's considerably different in terms of what it takes to go through our building and safety process, our planning process, than it did even two years ago. And so there is a, there's a lag, there's a gap there now, that has to somehow be closed with information to the general public when they come to the counter, in terms of understanding, "This is what I'm going to have to deal with, or at least I'm going to have to answer these, these questions." And it's about, how's that format presented? I think it's something that, you know, as a planning commission, we should actually take a look at, because it's, it's about, you know, greasing the wheel, so to speak, on the process, because you can get really hung up, you know, in terms of time, and as we know, time is money and all this sort of thing. So what does it take?
I really honestly think that the processes were, a lot of the processes and rules and regulations were there. They just weren't implemented, or, or, and they were just forgotten. And so there's a lot of criticism all the time-- And so there's a lot of criticism all the time of staff, but it, but the new staff that's here, that's been here the last two years, has had to turn this big ocean liner around and get people to understand. I think we have done more stop-work orders since I've been here to stop the work that people are doing without permits than I've ever done in my life, because it's just constant. And to educate people and explain to them that it's a culture here to not get a permit, it really is, none I've ever seen before. And I feel bad because it's constantly stopping people because they haven't gone to a design review permit, they don't have this permit, they don't have that. And, and so we do the best we can to do outreach to people, but, you know, you know, it's actually state law in a lot of places, you know, that contractors need a permit, they need to bring things up to ADA compliance, you know? We have people not pulling building permits, that's in direct violation of their contractor's state license. But we spend a lot of our time doing that. So I just want to explain that, you know, these rules were on the books, they've always been on, many of them have been on the books, but we spend a lot of our time educating people that now there's somebody actually watching, you know, and somebody, and there's a lot of criticism if we don't stop them. So you're right, there's a lot of new things and a lot of time that's been added on, and you need to come in with enough lead time that you meet your own parameters, and that's a very difficult and hard lesson to learn, because you can't make, you can't pull the clock back. So if you didn't allow yourself enough time to go through all these processes, you're not going to be happy.
And I think the sooner that an applicant knows what those processes are or could possibly be, the better. And I think that's what was not happening in the past, and you're, the city is doing their job now, as you said, per ordinance, per state law. But is, there's also the sense of a height, there's a heightened sense of awareness in all arenas, whether it be historical preservation, cultural resources, you name it, you go down the line, environmental, you know, and it doesn't stop. So what I'm saying is, maybe we need to look at, what does that process look like at the inception, and when someone comes across, I'm thinking about doing a commercial project in the downtown area, what may I encounter in that? And just, here's something for you to think about before you file your application, you know? And just, just a general awareness, I know to some degree, we have parts and pieces of all this laying around, but I don't think it's congealed into one document.
We're trying, but again, you know, we can just take like the cultural resource monitoring, it can be all over stated, it can be stamped all over a set of plans, and the contractor still not adhere to it, you know? I mean, we can't make-
That's a different issue, though.
Right, I'm just saying, we can't make everybody compliant. People drive faster than the posted road speed, you know? I mean, you know, we're really trying to make sure everybody understands. But it's even like the public art, the public art can add about two, two and a half months on to you pulling a building permit, because of the way the ordinances are written, and that's, we try to tell people over and over and over again, make sure you're getting your public art, make sure you're getting your public art done. But we do hold people up, as you know, even for public art.
Is there a document for initial application? I mean, you know, I know Kathy, you and I have sat, Kathleen, you and I have sat down and do a pre-meeting, and we have discussions, and they're very informative. And a lot of information is taken, and we had the benefit of working in this community a lot. It's a little more onerous for someone who comes in from the outside for the first time and trying to, even though it's state law and it's regulated, and we should know by, you know, through their own professional expertise, but just a simple outline, a layout of, you know, this is part of the process. I know it's, I would just like to review that. I really think that could be beneficial for future developers, homeowners, whatever, just to kind of look at the process, just as a general, it probably needs to be looked at anyways, any, every couple of years.
That would be good. I think that, you know, with the new environmental constraints that, you know, people that came in a few months ago are going to be very surprised at how much time's going to be added on to them now with the AB 52, which is a state law. But I think that, you know, it's a constant learning curve for people, and unfortunately, lots of people don't keep up with their professional, you know, education, so they don't know all this stuff is going down, which we're really fortunate that we have the city attorneys kind of keeping us up on everything. But we're working on flow charts and things like that as time allows for us, and I'd be happy to bring something back. But we do have, you know, like, everyone's working in the city, the public art people have had a handout that's supposed to go to the developers, again, they don't get, public art is triggered by a building permit, not by a planning permit, okay? So when they crafted the ordinance, it's triggered by the building permit, so you're already in process by the time your valuation is done. This is, in my opinion, a lot of this stuff is caused because you have people writing ordinances that don't do this for a living, you know? And so in the history of Ojai, it's been to have their ordinances written by attorneys, and so they don't necessarily understand the triggers in it. So once you come in for a building permit, and now, and now we get your valuation, now you're forced, as you sit and wait with your building permit in hold, to do about a month and a half, two months of public art process. And, and so, you know, we've tried to educate everybody how, that's just really unusual to be in, in that process and be, and be in a position of having to stay. So we're constantly trying to get these things upgraded, and, and, so if you want to waiver out of the public art, you have to go to the City Council, and then that kind of, you know, Art Commission meets once a month, City Council gets twice, so it all has to fall in the right way. And so, you know, try to explain that in most cities, if you want to pay an in-lug fee, you know, you pay the fee and you're out. I mean, it's not go to council and ask to pay the in-lug fee, the in-lug fee is established by council as an in-lug fee, right? And so there's some things that we think that, as staff, we can make suggestions to make it less onerous to go through the process, but, but whether or not, you know, that's really something that ends up coming down the pike and really happening is a whole different thing. But I understand, we deal with it every day, you know, we make it, it's very hard for us to educate people, because, you know, they're here and they want to get their building permit, and you see it all the time, the buildings that are stuck after we put a stop-work order on them. Ojai Burger, we put a stop-work order on them, and it was stuck that way for a long time, in a half-constructed position. So we're aware that we're affecting people's lives, we try very much to be soft-handed as much as we can, but the ordinances are what the ordinances are.
Agree, you know? I think it's, it's education, you know, it's, I do believe it warrants more discussion by the Planning Commission, maybe on a point-by-point basis even, even if, you know, it's a piece, piece at a time, we spend whatever, you know, 20 minutes a session talking about it, until we, at least we have a thorough, a more thorough understanding of what's required. Because what, our decisions here directly affect those people that come before us, and we didn't, we need to be, understand what, what we're requiring of them.
Well, and to recognize that, you know, we're trying to change a culture here, as Ms. Wald said, you're trying to change a culture of non-compliance for decades, and then piling on a whole bunch of new stuff all the time. I mean, how do you change a culture and then keep adding new stuff at the same time? It's why this process, I think, is just completely crazy-making to people, and why people are so frustrated, because there's too many variables at play all the time. And now we're talking about yet another ordinance, and it's urgent. To me, again, adding so much more static to the process, rather than calming the static, calming the input, calming the stimuli, letting it get sorted out for people, clear for people, predictable for people, and then figure out now what? Until we have clarity on how just to run this city, the building department in a sane way, I don't know why we're talking about changing things.
So Chair, how would we go about, I mean, how would we even go about agendizing or some, would we just go ordinance by, or how would we even do that?
Well, in my mind, I'm thinking maybe we could start the conversation by, maybe at the next meeting, Kathleen, you would show us what a typical handout would be to an applicant who wants to build something in town here, on a commercial basis, or-
We have some things we can provide you.
Just so we can get familiarized with that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Hands on, and then I think that will give us, lead us into good conversations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And let's see where it goes.
That's, that's no problem.
Keep it simple.
I'll be happy to do that. Maybe I can put the handouts up on a PowerPoint, just so we can discuss some, you know, up on the TV, so we can kind of go through if you have, you know, suggestions and things like that. Sometimes that works really well, when we're doing something like that, as a workshop-y type thing. Okay.
Start clarifying some of these issues for us, okay?
No problem.
Yeah, so basically what you're saying is bringing all this together and kind of organizing it, not only for ourselves, but when the applicant comes in. Like personally, I'm, you know, a lot of this could be, you know, maybe it's a lot of paperwork, maybe it's online, but if I had a project and I came into the planning department, and it was a new project, and I was like, I don't know what I'm going to need to do, even if they said, here's a notebook, or here's a stack, and it was all organized, and I could just pour through it and go, okay, these are the things that I potentially am going to have to do, I think it gives people just an idea of, gee, do I want to go forward or not, and realize I may have this art project, I may have to do, you know, this, that, and the other, these are state laws or state ordinances, I'm going to have to do this. I think it's, yeah.
They can decide to build their factory in Nevada.
Right. And then hopefully, by having that too, they're going to become more educated, which I know is-
Is a good thing.
Is a good thing. And, and they're hopefully going to have more clarity. And the project will hopefully be submitted in its fullness, because they are aware that there's more information. I mean, this is all, you know, I'm hoping.
Well, I think, I think most of it is here, it's just putting it into an orderly document. It's there, it's all here, it's just bringing it together, that's all it is, really.
It's a start. I mean, there's no perfect, there's no panacea here, I mean, that's just the way things are, but at least we can try to distill the process maybe a little bit, a little more in the right direction, so let's start by discussing it. Okay, so any other additional comments? Then this meeting's adjourned.